Thank you. Good evening. We're back on the-
Reporting in progress.
Good evening. We're back on the regular agenda, the April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Agenda of the Regular Planning Commission Meeting. Right now, as for action on the agenda for this evening, are there any changes?
Um, yes, we have a couple of changes to the agenda tonight. We are asking that we move recognition of persons attending the meeting to item three. And that we move, my motion to, well, first of all, we need a motion to replace the pledge of allegiance with the vote on the action of the agenda.
Can I have a motion, please, commissioners?
So moved.
Commissioner Tui is the second.
Second.
Second, back to Mr. Freeland. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered.
And then, action on the proposed agenda. We have some items to move around tonight. We move, um, to, we want to move the recognition of persons attending the meeting to item number three. We want to move item ten A, the joint work session, to item number four. And we want to move item four, action or proposed summary of actions, to item five.
And then everything else will follow?
Yes.
Thank you. You guys understand that?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Godway, Commissioner Tui. All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to make one comment. I am in favor of that, but I would like to make one comment. For those who may have just tuned in, the reason why we skipped pledge of allegiance was we just did it-
We already did it, yes.
-a few moments ago, under the original meeting.
Thank you.
So if somebody just tuned in, that's the reason why we skipped it.
Appreciate you making that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will go on now to what is now item number three, recognition of persons attending the meeting. Tonight, from the county administrator's office, we have Mark Willis, county administrator. We have Linda Vasallo, deputy county administrator. We have Katie Britton, clerk to the B O C C. With planning and zoning, we have Mary Beth Cook, director. Judy Makel, deputy director of zoning. Carolyn Sunderland, deputy director of planning. Jenny Palmer Walker, long-range planner. Rachel O'Shea, zoning planner. Christine Fenimore, principal planner. Jessica DeCattano, planner three. Will Hager, planner three. We have Colleen Anglin, planner two. Jay Cousineau, planner two. Jesse Clark, planner one. Kat Lockwood, planner one. We have Chris Goldsmith, development review coordinator, serving as our moderator. We have Marie Frederick, um, board of appeals coordinator, serving as our recording clerk tonight. And we have Lisa Shepherd, our administrative aide. And for public works, we have J R Crossgrove, acting director. And serving as legal counsel, we have John Manniglin.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we will go into the joint, um, work session, Calvert County zoning ordinance update intro- uh, introduction. And this is a joint work session.
Good evening, commissioners. My re- my name is Rachel O'Shea, zoning planner, and with me, I have Will Hager, planner three. The purpose of this evening's work session is to set the foundation of how the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance work together to set and carry out the vision and the goals for how the county's constituents want the county to grow and develop. We will also review the goals and objectives of this zoning ordinance update and to set the stage for how we would like to progress through future work sessions to review the articles of the draft for the board's consideration and discussion. At this time, I'll turn it over to Will to begin the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we're gonna start off with some background. So, the comprehensive plan was adopted in August of two thousand nineteen and amended in December of two thousand twenty-two. Specifically, the future land use map was the focus of the two thousand twenty-two amendments. And subsequently, over a period of time, planning and zoning staff have been reviewing and revising the draft zoning ordinance. And during that time period, feedback was also sought, uh, from the Department of Public Works, uh, the Department of Parks and Re- Recreation, a few other entities. And recommendations from those departments were incorporated into the draft. And currently, the draft is under review by the county attorney's office. So, what is a zoning ordinance? A zoning ordinance is a set of regulations and standards regarding, uh, the use and development of land and structures. It describes zoning districts, the types of land uses allowed in each district, and the conditions by which those uses can be permitted. It includes a map of zoning districts. It includes regulations regarding the subdivision of land, site development and design, protection of natural resources, floodplain, parking, landscaping, signs, transferable development rights. It also includes state requirements like critical area and forest conservation regulations, as well as regulations for outdoor lighting, general development submittal requirements, standards for variances and appeals, and enforcement provisions. So it's quite a lot. And so what is the connection between the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan? The comprehensive plan is, uh, it sets forth a vision and, uh, policies for the county. A zoning ordinance provides rules for using or developing land. And per Maryland State Land Use Law, zoning regulations must be consistent with the local government's comprehensive plan. So, in summary, the comprehensive plan is more of a vision, and the zoning ordinance is more of a tool crafted to help achieve that vision. There are also specific goals, objectives, and action items from the comprehensive plan that are relevant to the zoning ordinance. And those goals, objectives, and action items were reviewed by county staff during this process to ensure consistency. And, uh, well, before I move forward, zoning districts are delineated based on the future land use map from the comprehensive plan, which leads into our next slide. So what we're looking at here is, to the left, a snapshot of the future land use map. And on the right is a sort of sneak preview of the draft zoning map. So as you can see, uh, as compared to the future land use map on the left, if you've been following the, the comprehensive plan and amendments to the future land use map, there really shouldn't be any major surprises with the draft zoning map. The primary differences being, the future land use map was more paint- painted with broad strokes, while the zoning map is more fine and precise, with zoning, uh, district boundaries for the most part, following parcel line boundaries with the goal to avoid split-zone parcels as much as possible. So, as compared to current zoning, in order to bring the zoning map in line with the comprehensive plan, zoning districts have been redrawn and a few new zoning districts have been created. One thing you might notice, looking at Prince Frederick here, is that the town center expansions have not been included in the draft zoning map. Those will be addressed at the time those particular town center ordinances are updated. Expansion of the town centers will require amending the town center master plans and zoning ordinances in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And also, our plan is to make the draft zoning map available to the public through an interactive map application with our, which our G I S team has put together, where citizens will be able to, will be able to compare the draft zoning map with current zoning, the two thousand twenty-two future land use map, with some other relevant map data included. So how do the town center ordinances fit in? Uh, one of the interesting things about zoning in Calvert County is that we don't just have the Calvert County zoning ordinance, we also have seven individual, individual town center zoning ordinances. Those town center ordinances are currently separate documents from the Calvert County zoning ordinance, but there is some overlap in terms of regulations to follow. The town center zoning ordinances sometimes refer to the Calvert County zoning ordinance. Town center zoning ordinances will be updated separately at the conclusion of each town center master plan update. However, town center land use tables and conditions are currently located in the Calvert County zoning ordinance and will be included as part of, as part of this update process. So after individual town center ordinances are updated and adopted, the intention is to place them within the Calvert County zoning ordinance, so we have one document to reference and use instead of several. Having the land use tables, conditions for uses, and eventually the town center zoning ordinance, ordinance is located in one place, it'll be more user-friendly and more manageable than having these regulations spread across multiple locations. So why update the zoning ordinance? Well, first, to be, uh, consistent with the comprehensive plan, it also provides opportunity for a comprehensive review of zoning regulations. So the last comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance was in two thousand six, almost two decades ago. And in recent years, a lot of text amendments have been necessary. And when we're having to do multiple text amendments frequently, it's a sign that a comprehensive review and zoning ordinance might be needed. And it can be pref- it can be preferable to update a, an ordinance comprehensively rather than doing it piecemeal through text amendments. With the current ordinance, there have also been issues with vague or unclear regulations and how they should be interpreted. As part, and as part of the goal to provide a more efficient and user-friendly ordinance, we've aimed to reduce redundant and repetitious text. And with that, I'll hand things over to Rachel.
Thank you, Will. So through staff's review of the current zoning ordinance and through putting the draft together, we've come up with a list of objectives for this update that, um, we're hoping to accomplish. And that includes to ensure uniformity with the Calvert two thousand forty newly adopted comprehensive plan, as well as to condense the document and remove unnecessary language. We would like to reorganize sections to make the document more intuitive for its users. And we'd like to revise vague language to limit the need for zoning interpretations. And lastly, to update outdated requirements to be more in line with state standards and current best management practices, practices. I would now like to, um, go over a few of some of the, um, topics we'll be hoping to cover. These include accessory apartments, short-term rentals, planned unit developments, inclusionary zoning, utility-scale solar energy generating systems, electronic signs, and density. These are a few of the hot topics and topics that have come up over the past several years as being of concern, that we hope to address through the future, um, work sessions reviewing the draft zoning ordinance. And now we'll get into the proposed, um, draft schedule. This schedule is not set in stone and is very flexible and, um, can change as, as necessary. But as of now, we've set up a list throughout the next year of joint work sessions. And we've divided the, um, articles of the draft up into manageable chunks. We hope to have open comment periods prior to each work session that will then be compiled and considered and reported on as part of each joint work session. Also periodically through the process, we hope to have, uh, public forums that will, um, be hosted by staff to allow for increased public engagement as well as education. And, um, we hope to give overview of what the articles cover and allow for citizen to, uh, citizens to come and ask questions and, um, voice their concerns. This next slide is a, um, schedule of the proposed public comment periods. The intent is to purp- to post the, the draft on the county's website for, to be accessible by the public. And to accept and consider public comment of, of the articles as we present them, uh, during the joint work sessions. So, next steps and action items. Due to the complexity of the rollout schedule, staff is requesting the B O C C discuss and consider a moratorium on text amendments until after the adoption of the zoning ordinance. This will allow staff to focus on the draft zoning ordinance and preparing responses to, to, um, questions and concerns as well as being able to dissect public comment and, and present that accordingly. Staff is also requesting the board's review and discuss the proposed draft presentation schedule. We're hoping to begin, um, with posting the first several sections of the draft, um, beginning of May, May tenth, and having the first open public comment period. And then following, um, with the first joint work session to review those first set of articles, uh, mid-June. So with that, um, we have a slide of our information where we will have, um, all of the information regarding the zoning ordinance update available on the county's website, as well as an email address to receive public comment and questions, um, and contact information. And I think at this point, we'll open it up for, for questions and discussion.
I do have a question on page ten. The public forum schedule for zoning districts and zoning map, that's proposed for this coming June, not last June, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to say, because I didn't remember it last year.
No, that should definitely be two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
And when you guys are doing this, I'm gonna throw out a few questions because I'm trying to find out where we are, how far, how close we are to the comprehensive plan, the two thousand forty objectives or thoughts as they were when they were put in place a few years ago. How many total residences are, were estimated or anticipated by two thousand forty in the comprehensive plan?
Mary Beth Cook, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Great question. So, we are working on and just initiated a full analysis of where we are. How many residents we have, um, how many have been built since the last census. We've got a whole system. We actually met with a, uh, Greg Bowen, who did the previous study for a comprehensive plan to get some suggestions so that we can, um, know that the tools that he used in the past, and we have many more tools right now to use. So we are, prior to bringing the density, um, discussion to both boards, we will have those numbers for you. So we are working on getting, um, answers to how many there are, how many have been built. How, based on the zoning, the proposed zoning, how many more units could be built? So we're working on answering all of those types of questions.
Did you read my notes? Because that's, that's all my questions.
Thank you both, then.
Not all of them, but that's the majority of them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So am I reading this correctly? Are we gonna wrap this up by January of two thousand twenty-four?
So we're, we're hoping to get through, um, all of the work sessions to review all of the drafts, um, by January and then o- have another round of public comment on the full draft at that time. We're hoping for, um, to be able to move forward with, um, uh, some type of, um, public hearing in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. But again, um, this timeline is fluid. It couldn't be changed. Things can, additional work sessions can be added if necessary. So it's, it, this is, this schedule is, um, temporary and i- it can change at your direction at any time you see fit.
So, you say in spring. We should be able to wind it up in early spring, I would think. Okay, but we'll take a look at it. Thank you.
And Rachel, you're asking-
So, so, I have, I, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Lisa?
Go ahead, Lisa.
So, there's been several text amendments through the town centers. Um, so we're putting a moratorium on them now since they've already been voted on and passed?
The, the moratorium would, i- is being requested for anything new coming in the door. So it doesn't affect any text amendments that have already been adopted. It would just be putting a stop to taking in and, and processing any new requests for text amendments during, during this schedule.
Right. And why is that?
Um, really just to allow staff to have the time to dedicate to the, the zoning ordinance and, and the schedule at hand. You know, we anticipate, um, a, a number of public comment to come in through the, the different, um, periods that we're offering, and we want to be able to devote our time into, um, processing those and, and putting together the information for the board's consideration. And if we're taking time away from that to put together text amendments that are then gonna conflict with the draft, we just feel it would be best to, um, put a, put a stop in it during, during this time as we go through this schedule.
Thank you.
You want to continue on with your workflow uninterrupted so you can meet your target dates?
Can't hear you. I can't hear.
I said-
Can you?
This is Catherine Grosso. They, um, said that they want to continue with their workflow without interruptions as to new amendments so they can go through and hit their target dates.
Oh, I got, I, I understand.
And how long would the moratorium last? What are you requesting?
That is completely up to, for you all to, um, discuss and decide on. It would be our preference through the adoption of the new zoning ordinance. But again, that, that is up for your, your decision.
From what I understand, working on some text amendments before, it takes almost a year to have a text amendment go through.
Depending on how complex, um, the text amendment is, some take longer than others. Usually, our average is about six months.
Gotcha. And so are there any that are, that you know of that are on the horizon? I, I don't know of any that are anticipated at this point.
Mary Beth Cook is coming back.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. Um, there is potential for, we just received one this week. And so, just to let you know that a moratorium would require a public hearing. So, you know, tonight, we would be looking for direction to have that public hearing for the moratorium. The ones that are already in the door will give due process. But the other important thing is, while we're putting a moratorium on it, we won't be specifically addressing text amendments. But if someone wants to suggest a change, we'll take that change through the process. It just won't happen until the new ordinance is adopted. So it's not like we're tabling them and saying, oh, you have to wait. They'll be processed.
Right, but it won't be considered a text amendment at that point.
Right, it'll be an update.
It'll be considered a suggestion. It'll be put into zoning if it's approved.
Correct.
So new stuff stood, still could get processed, but just not as a text amendment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So Rachel, there's some language in there about utility solar projects?
Yes, that's a new section that we, we have added to the draft since we've not had that.
Has there been some legislation in Annapolis that takes all that out of our hands?
Yes, there are different levels of utility scale solar, and the larger projects are put up to the, to that level for, for review and decision. So we, we are limited, but we figured since we hadn't had it before that it's something that we should look into since it is expanding across the state.
And you're hoping to have this wrapped up this time next year?
I would say that the schedule is, um, ambitious. But again, the, the schedule is, can, can change as necessary. This is a suggestion, a timeline that, you know, we, we would like to work with right now. But again, it can, it can be pushed back, um, i- if need be, depending on how things go.
Is your public outreach program similar to what you did with the comprehensive plan?
Um, I would say it, it is similar. Um, we utilized, to develop this schedule, we utilized the same schedule that was followed for the, um, zoning ordinance that was adopted in two thousand and six. So we followed that, that schedule for, um, the work sessions, the public comment periods, as well as the, uh, public meetings.
Well, I just want to make sure you do as much of that as you can, because as you mentioned in your first slide, the comprehensive plan is just a vision. This is, these are the glasses, and these are much more important than the comprehensive plan, in my opinion. So hopefully, we're gonna do maybe even more public outreach than we did the first time because devil's in the details, and we want to make sure we get this right.
And we can certainly, we can add additional public meetings or anything else that, that the board see fit. We have already been, um, had discuss- We have already been, um, had discussions with, um, CMR regarding, um, different tools that we can utilize for doing public outreach and being able to communicate with, with, um, the public on questions and making sure that they get their answers that they need, so.
A year and a half is a long time, and I'd have changes.
I'm sure there, there will be a lot of topics that come up that will, um, necessitate changes to the draft.
It's my only concern about a moratorium, as was stated by Commissioner Gadway. You know, if you, your process gets delayed and you're not done this time next year, even if you're incorporating new stuff in the new zoning ordinance, it's still not gonna get implemented until you're all done, and there could be things arise that can't wait.
That, there is a potential for that, yes.
Commissioner Williams, go ahead.
There's been several text amendments that have come through since the comprehensive plan has been approved, and then it went through the lawsuit and was, you know, that was tabled. And then now, it's like, you want to put a moratorium on the ordinance, like, and we've had several, several, several text amendments that come through. So I just don't understand why now we're doing a moratorium. I mean, I understand the workload and the overload and all that, to focus on getting the comprehensive plan, you know, buttoned up, but-
Having, having multiple text amendments is one of the primary reasons that we realize that the, there is a need for a comprehensive, um, update to the zoning ordinance, um, but i- it makes it difficult to keep up with doing changes to the adopted zoning ordinance while we're making changes to the draft, um, and keeping all of that straight and consistent. So it, it would be nice to be able to focus on one and not doing both at the same time. But a- again, that is up for your, your discussion and decision.
Well, Rachel, I think you stated, you know, you have the ability, if there's something pertinent that has to happen, the ability's there, but to keep this going as fast as possible, because we know how long things take anyway, the less interruptions the better, I think is what I'm hearing from you.
Yes, I mean, we, we put this schedule together, we, we would like to stick to it as much as possible, um, by not having to stop and do text amendments in the middle will, will definitely help with that, for sure.
There's something that would typically take six months, now it's gonna take a year and six months.
I think she's speaking about text amendment, could, could be six months theoretically.
Yes, I mean, if we were to get a request in the door to, tomorrow, we would most likely be looking at a six-month adoption period for that one text amendment. For the entire draft zoning, we're, we're hoping for a pub, uh, an adoption, um, early in twenty twenty-four. But again, depending on how many, um, concerns pop up and how many changes that we have to make to the draft, um, and bring back for reconsideration, this timeline could always change.
It was my understanding, I thought I heard somebody say that in order to put a moratorium in, it would have to go to public hearing as well? So, I wouldn't see the harm in hearing from the public on that. How do we move forward to get to that point?
Agreed.
The, the boards can make the decision to move, move their-
So this is, John Norris, County Attorney, this is actually an administrative function for the Board of County Commissioners, because it was non-advertised as part of their meeting, so they can't take any action tonight. You would have to amend, excuse me, chapter one, dash six, I believe is the process for amending the zoning ordinance to suspend that one dash four, to suspend that provision, so it's actually a text amendment to suspend processing of text amendments.
Nice.
Spoken like a true lawyer, by the way.
When are you gonna run for office?
I'm running from, running from. So that's the process to, to put this pause in place. It's not truly a moratorium, you're not denying anybody a right, other than a right to seek a change.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Sure.
So, so Rachel, we've seen some text amendments recently that were proposed because of flaws discovered in the zoning ordinance. Will there be some consideration should something like that come up while this process is playing out?
Well, that, I mean, that's part of why we're doing this comprehensive review and updating the entire zoning ordinance is to hopefully resolve those inconsistencies and, and those issues, um, so that hopefully in the future, we'll have less need for text amendments.
That's a big guess.
And that helps a lot, because as far as zoning, it's pretty much a mess in the county, we all know that. There's, I mean, we just had a few in Salomon's, um, you know, there's a zoning right next door as X, but now they wanna do X, but they're not zoned as that. So, you know, we, I think, I think a good recap of all zoning in the county would be needed.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
I heard that it was an administrative function by the County-
I can't hear, if you're talking, can you, Greg?
I'd heard this is an administrative function by the County Commissioners, what action, if any, is needed by the planning commission? A nod doesn't come across on the microphone.
I, I believe, I believe that's our function to handle, and we will take that request into consideration.
Yes, but this evening, we're looking for consensus that you, um, would like us to move forward as presented this evening. So not necessarily a vote, but just go forward.
I think it's a great idea to move forward.
I'll entertain a motion, then.
I'll make a motion that we ask staff to start proceeding with the proposed public comment periods in reference to the zoning, uh, comprehensive rewrite. Is that an adequate motion?
I think so, yes.
Second.
Just dramatically, is that enough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, planning commissioners? Hearing none, all's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Mr. President, what if we wanna move forward with the schedules proposed?
We don't have an action to take, do we, Mr. County Attorney?
As an administrative function, you could accept the calendar that's been laid out, but everything else that was asked tonight of the Board of County Commissioners will have to go on your open session, Rachel.
That's why I didn't think we could really take an action, but we could take a motion to adopt the-
The schedule.
Proposed schedule.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we can't, we've, uh, as, uh, as our other attorney says, we've adjourned, we can't take any action. So, we will take under advisement all the information we've received tonight.
We're here to learn.
We'll be here all night.
Hey, you folks are excused.
You've been on the board long enough, Mike, you learned.
Yeah, you learned a subject from the attorney.
Yeah.
Thank you, Will, thank you, Rachel. You guys have done this.
At this time, we'll take a brief recess.
Recording stopped.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
All right, we will convene our meeting with item number five, action of proposed summary of actions. We have the March fifteenth regular meeting.
Motion, please.
Motion to approve and present.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We're good, thank you.
Next on the agenda is item six, major subdivisions for final review and action. We do not have any on the agenda tonight. Next on the agenda would be item seven, applications for site plan and action. We have one item tonight, item A, seven A, CSPR one four two eight two eight Magnolia Ridge West, and it's a residential townhouse development.
Thank you, Tamara. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name's Christine Finnamore, and I'm a principal planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I will be presenting the staff report for the conceptual site plan, CSPR one four two eight two eight Magnolia Ridge West. Also present this evening is the applicant and their consultant. Here you see a location map showing the property. And here you see a map showing the property in relation to landmarks within Prince Frederick Town Center. The town center is in orange, and the subject property is highlighted in yellow. Tax map twenty-four, parcels six, three fifty-nine, three sixty, and four ninety-six. Here is the twenty twenty-two aerial photography showing the same property location. You'll see Calvert High School, Calvert Middle School, Dares Beach Road, Maryland two four, and Calvert Elementary School is to the east. Again, this is a little more zoomed in, but you will see the town center boundary outlined in the orange color, and the site is highlighted in yellow. This slide shows the color exhibit of the project layout. You've received the staff report and various attachments. I'll just breeze through the staff report topics. Starting with background use and general project information. The project is known as Magnolia Ridge West. It's a proposed residential community comprised of seventy-nine townhouse lots, and supporting site development on approximately twenty-six acres in the new town subarea of Prince Frederick. The plan review process. The conceptual site plan was accepted for review by the Technical Evaluation Group, also known as TEG, in April of twenty twenty-two. Plan number two was received for review in December of twenty twenty-two. Plan number three, which is what the staff report is based on, was received for review in February of twenty twenty-three. The conceptual site plan has been reviewed by the TEG for basic compliance with the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, Prince Frederick zoning ordinance, and all other applicable ordinances and regulations, including, but not limited to, proposed land use setbacks, access and vehicular flow, which for this particular project, vehicular access is proposed with a private roadway off of Fox Run Boulevard and through the Magnolia Ridge project. I don't know if I have a pointer. Oh, no. The top right hand of the screen, you will see that intersection with Fox Run Boulevard. Labeled. Pedestrian access, including sidewalks, which are proposed throughout the community. Parking requirements, and those are outlined in the staff report. A hundred and eighty-two spaces are required, and a hundred and eighty-eight are proposed. Thirty spaces are perpendicular or on-street guest parking. And it should be noted that the perpendicular on-street parking as proposed is not permitted, and it just needs to be revised in order to be approvable by DP, or Department of Public Works.
What would that revision look like? Would that come from the planners, or would that... What, what is that revision?
The way it's proposed does not meet requirements.
Understood.
And those requirements are mainly coming from things that the Department of Public Works reviews, and it would be done by the applicant or their consultant.
So they'd have to change roughly thirty from perpendicular on-street to something different?
There's probably various solutions, and if we get a little further into... I can finish up my presentation. It's a great question. And there's probably somebody else in the room that could answer that better than I.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Another topic that is reviewed is open space and recreational facilities. And all of those numbers are included in the staff report. There's various types that are required. Open space is point oh five acres per unit, for example. So for this project, it's three point nine five acres. Rec facilities include active recreation, playfields, mini parks, paved area, and this project proposes various means to meet that requirement. Indoor community space is proposed at eight hundred square feet with a community building. Also, at this time in the process, plans are reviewed at the conceptual level of detail for things like landscaping and lighting, adequate public facilities, water and sewer design. And it should be noting, noted that within the staff report, there was an outstanding issue regarding grinder pumps, and we've since met, we have since met with DPW, Department of Public Works, and this comment is no longer relevant. Also reviewed are environmental regulations, such as steep slopes, erodible soils, wetlands, streams, and associated buffers, forest conservation requirements, stormwater management regulations. Because we are in Prince Frederick, Prince Frederick Town Center, architectural review and approval is required. This slide shows sheet three point O of the conceptual site plan. And most of the sheets from the conceptual site plan are included in your supporting documents. Here you will see the building elevations and a color schematic of the front facade for townhouse units. And again, those are both documents included in the attachments. And they were added to a slide here for the presentation. At this time, I will entertain any questions for me. I will also mention that the applicant and their engineering agent are present for any questions, as well as staff and acting director from the Department of Public Works, if you have any questions for them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, please. A starting point, go, go back to that slide five, please. We were talking about on-street parking earlier. I know that that elevation in the bottom right picture depicts the townhouses themselves, but if we're, if we're running into problems with parking concerns, if those driveways look like they're depicted as two, two cars wide, and looks like three cars deep just in the driveway itself on those pictures before it even gets to the roadway. So how ma, how big is the driveways for these things, and how many cars would be able to park there? And are those considered parking spots?
Is there anyone who can answer that?
One second, too, if you don't mind, Commissioner. And, and also, is that a double garage there? And is it for one unit, or is, that's split between two units? Well, I, we're bringing up your help right behind you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Anthony Alexon, with the Principal Engineer now, COA Barrett, formerly Barrett and Associates. So the zoning ordinance allows for, to include two parking spaces for each townhouse in your total count. One within the garage, one within the driveway. The guests, the guest spaces are also scattered throughout. The question about perpendicular on-street parking isn't actually something that's in the road and site development ordinance. It's just not something that's addressed in the construction standards and the typical details for the roadways. Actually, all of the townhouse developments, as far as I know, in Prince Frederick, including the most recently approved ones, which was Patuxent Commons, and Magnolia Ridge, which is the one that we were here last to speak about, both have perpendicular, or all have perpendicular parking on them. And it's something that actually we've met and discussed with Director Cosgrove about. There's some shift in some spaces that we're looking to do, just to get them further away from intersections, and actually introducing parallels parking near the, kind of the amenities areas, near the parks and things like that, where you'd be peeling in, dropping off children. But all of it is, is very doable and working out and still meeting the requirements of the ordinance.
One of the reasons why I ask about it, there's a specific development in North Beach. I don't know the name of it, but I have to go in and out of it quite, quite often. And I have an extremely difficult time driving my pickup into it because there's parking directly in front of the unit. There's a garage, and then no side parking on the side of the street on that side. And then the other side of the street has literally cars stacked, one behind each other in a ten-foot-long driveway, and then a ten-foot space behind it. And I, there have been times that I've had to back out three to four hundred yards because there's nowhere to even turn around, and it's just, it's a nightmare of a parking situation. And I'd, I'd hate to see something like that.
Right.
Because what's pictured up there looks like a fifty-foot-long driveway with a two-car garage. And I, I don't think you guys are talking about a fifty-foot driveway with two-car garages, right?
The, the minimum driveway length is twenty-three feet.
Okay.
So that's setback from the sidewalk that's there. So there's a twenty-three-foot driveway. Mr. Gertz, is most of these at least two-car garages?
Yeah.
With two-car garages as well, so the, and, you know, with that two-car garages, you're talking probably at least an eighteen-foot wide by twenty-three-foot deep. So ideally, you could probably park two in the driveway, two in a garage. And then the other big thing, and this is just learned lessons of talking with other townhouse developers that have done it in the past, with also big NVR, Ryan Homes, things like that, like making sure that you have adequate guest parking. And that's part of the reason for the perpendicular parking and how we spread it out across the site is we want to make sure that there's pockets of that parking in places that it makes the most sense. If you have, you know, child's birthday party or something, you have some parking nearby for guests to be there as well. We're actually exceeding the guest parking requirement for this. And it's definitely something that we've kept in our mind with the design. Make sure that we're providing adequate parking, and it doesn't become... And there's, there's cul-de-sacs and interconnecting streets, so you don't end up in that situation where you're down a long road, you don't have any ability to turn around, you're having to back out.
Okay.
Was I able to answer all that question?
I'm not happy with it, but I guess that's, is what it is.
Okay.
That, that's all I had on parking. I did have some other items.
Continue.
All right. With the grinder pumps not permitted in the, for townhouse developments, and I know you said it was resolved, how did that get resolved?
There's actually nothing in the ordinance that prohibits it. In this case, the, the topography of the land requires to kind of come up to a crest and back down. So there's about twenty, twenty-five units that are downhill to where the gravity system would be so deep, it'd be twenty, thirty feet in the ground. It really wouldn't be viable if you ever had to get to it to maintain it. So each of the homes would have grinder pumps that pump out through a combined force main connecting back to the manhole. And it's actually a pretty common design for, especially for townhouse developments, as well as single-family ones that are in the county as well. So Chesapeake Village is a, is an example of that, where there's a good number of single-family homes that are on grinder pumps with a combined force main.
Okay. And what about the buffer areas that were, the buffer areas that needed to be addressed?
So the ordinance talks about not being able to fill wetlands themselves for residential uses. Part of the roadway that was coming in was clipping the wetlands buffer itself, with the intent of the remaining portion of the property, I don't know if you want to bring back the overall. With the access road that comes back in to the residential portion of it, the intent was is that to create some potential future commercial area there, Long Dares Beach Road. We were just trying to avoid necking it down so much where it really doesn't become usable through there. So we were about, I want to say somewhere between five to ten feet into the wetland buffer. We've looked at it, talked with Director Cosgrove about it, and it's a pretty easy fix to pull it out of there, and not, and be able to meet the intent of the ordinance without any substantial change to the plan.
But it's still listed as a substantive issue.
Right, I mean, it's substant, substantive in the, in the fact that it's important, and that we need to address it moving forward with, with the detailed site development plan.
Because I know that, like, at Northern El, I believe it was Northern Elementary, extra money was spent on the design and the plan in order to avoid going into the wetland area. We just got done looking at preserving additional areas around wetlands a few, you know, an hour ago now, I guess. I'd hate to sit there and keep pushing into wetland even by five feet here, ten foot there, because all those five feet and ten feet adds up.
I understand, absolutely. And that's, and that's something that we've already looked at and already fixed. So it's, it's not a engineer, you know, there's nothing engineering that's going to keep us from getting out of that completely. And what buffer we are in is, we're not in the wetlands themselves. The state implements a twenty-five-foot buffer. And then there's the county has another twenty-five-foot buffer on top of that. So we were about five to ten feet into that fifty-foot buffer.
All right, then I'm, I'm confused, and help me out. I'm new here.
Got it.
There's four substantive issues that are listed in our documents that are related to wetland stream buffers, et cetera. But you're saying those are non-issues?
No, I, I absolutely, you know, it's, it's something that we and our team looked at. That wetland issue, again, the idea was that we were seeing this road as serving both commercial, future commercial and residential, which is why we started down that path. Just to not have any issues or not have any impacts, it's easy to move the road out of that, to take care of the wetland buffer itself. The stream buffers are related to stormwater management facilities that are being constructed, which is allowable by the ordinance. On the north side of the property, there is an expanded stream buffer which goes beyond the fifty-foot buffer of this, of the stream itself. It incorporates steep slopes there. So there's a retaining wall there that's supporting both the stormwater management structures, as well as the last few townhouses that are there. So there's this kind of fine line of where that, that retaining wall is no longer supporting the grading that's necessary for the stormwater management, and there's where it's supporting townhouse development. That's something that we've also looked at, and we believe that we can shorten that wall, or even reduce the size of the facility. Right now, we've, we've designed the stormwater management to where we're at twenty-five percent over the requirement, knowing that we want to build in some, some ability with this thing, to, to begin with it being a concept level, and then we can tighten it as we move forward. So I think a combination of making that stormwater management facility smaller, as well as kind of addressing different tech, uh, construction techniques for the houses. So most people, you have a walkout basement where you come out of the back. There's, you can continue that subwall down further and basically create a deck for somebody off of that. And that, that then acts as that retaining wall. It eliminates the retaining wall around that portion of that steep slopes and gets it completely out of that buffer.
That's a pretty big change that would...
What's that?
I'd say it sounds like a pretty big change.
Um, not if you're looking at it from an aerial perspective, right? So all, all the...
Green, okay.
Well, it, for, for, what, what I'm saying is, if you, you know, tonight if this is approved, right, with the conditions that are there, right? I can with confidence tell you that whatever that plan is, if eventually gets built, if you're looking at it from an aerial perspective, you're not going to be able to see any differences between that. We're going to try to do our best to respect all of those environmentally sensitive areas, stay out of steep slopes where we can, and use other construction techniques to, to help us with that.
I mean, I get what you're saying with the aerial perspective, because that's where the rain comes from, but when it hits the ground, it has to flow on a, on a real perspective on the ground. That's why I was asking those questions.
Correct.
All right.
Did that answer your questions?
Pretty close. Um, so far.
All right, let me know, if there's something more that you'd love me to answer.
How many specimen trees and monument trees are you guys going to have to remove?
Um, there's eight, on this property itself, there's eighty-eight specimen trees and monument trees on the property. We're keeping over half.
Okay.
There's, I think, thirty-six total that we're removing, but we're also dedicating eight-plus acres of forest conservation, which is about thirty-one percent of the prop, of the property, which is about double the requirement within the town center.
And if I was understanding, those lines are really tight next to each other. Those are topographical lines on the map?
There, yes, there's some. There's, there's a lot going on on the map.
That thirty acres seems like it drops down, and you've got a lot of goalies in there that are in that thirty acres, right?
Correct. I mean, we, with forest conservation, you're always trying to preserve the most
Right.
environmentally sensitive areas. And, you know, that's part of this, too, right? The, the overall development capabilities on this property is somewhere up in the three hundred units, right? It's on the site data table. It's on the last sheet of the thing. I mean, this is seventy-nine units that we've tried to design in a way to kind of create a community feel, develop a good product for people, and honestly, slow people down through a community like this. A lot of the layout's been taken into consideration of, you know, you've, you've got a central park. You know, we've turned all the intersections into three-way stop intersections so that people aren't, we're not giving the people a chance to speed through it. We're trying to set up on top of the ridge where the area is the flattest, furthest away from this environmentally sensitive areas, and trying to do our best to create a nice community feel.
Have you already gotten the Board of Appeals approval on, on those other specimen trees and monument trees?
Not yet. So just as we go through the process, we want to make sure that we know exactly the number of trees that we're going to need to remove before we make that request. Um, maybe some that we could save. There may be some on the cusp that have to go. They may, it may trade, depending on some of those grading changes that we talked about. It was actually the same, same approach that we took with Magnolia Ridge, which referred to as Magnolia Ridge East, it's the other half of this property. There's some specimen trees there that we're going to have to remove. We're doing that through the detailed site development plan process.
And what's the difference between specimen trees and monument trees?
How big around it is. One, one's twenty-four, one's thirty and greater.
Okay.
So Prince Frederick Town Center is the only, correct me if I'm wrong, right? Prince Frederick Town Center is the only zoning ordinance, I believe, that talks about monument trees?
All right. The, who, who do you plan on having take care of the maintenance of the stormwater, um, management? The stormwater management ponds, the roadways, snow, ice, everything associated with that, the maintenance of all that? Because it looks to me like the way the roadways are being built, they could never be used as public roadways, public right roadways. Are those considered still private roadways?
They are. It was a comment we received. We initially proposed the main drag as a public roadway. It was a comment that we received during the review process to make all roads in this development private. We've used most of the standards from the Department of Public Works Construction Standards Book for the sections on this. And are going to work closely with Director Cosgrove, just to make sure that at the end of the day, if for some reason, some portion of these roadways wanted to go public, that they're in a good place and constructed in a way that'll allow them to do that.
But while they're private, who's going to take care of them?
Usually that's turned over to the HOA.
The HOA, it's going to be responsible for its own plowing and...
It's usually the responsibility of the builder. Mr. Gertz, please correct me if I say anything wrong here. Usually it's the responsibility of the builder during development, and then once it's done, the HOA's formed. There's the turnover period with the HOA. And I believe that's how most subdivisions in Coward County and other jurisdictions handle that. It's turned over to the HOA.
Until it's eighty percent built out, correct?
Yeah, Rodney Gertz with, uh, seven fifty Segal Beach Road, Prince Frederick, Maryland, being the builder developer here. Yeah, that's, it's common. That's what it's done all the time. If basically anything, whether you're in a, a single-family subdivision or whatever, your, your, all your storm management facilities go over to the HOA, and the HOA is, is responsible for the, the general care of them, the mowing, keeping trees off the sidewalls and all for years to come. And there's a transition period, whether it's eighty percent or a hundred percent, or, or, it's usually eighty is almost the bare minimum that you, you want to do that. But yeah, so when, all of our projects we've ever done, that's how it happens, and all the projects that are currently in the town, that's how it's set up. It's actually set up that they, they take over that, so. Yeah, and the, and the townhouse design, in, in, in a quick statement on that, like, we're basically, three forty-two is that number that was allowed for density here. We went to seventy-nine. We went to a very soft, you know, density, just for, you know, not only the impact of, obviously, when you're going townhouses versus departments, you're going to use a little more land with even less units, but it's a softer development with traffic and overall impact on the community as is. So just from the direction of even county commissioners, even when Commissioner Grabby was a county commissioner, and, and other commissioners, of kind of showing what, what they wanted to see, you know, or, or, and just what, you know, the county was leaning towards, and not overflushing or, or, you know, creating more... overflushing or, or, you know, creating more impact on our, on our sewer plant, committing more track on traffic, and, and so we feel like we've kind of come to, it's twenty-three percent of the density allowed on the property, and, 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 and we definitely have stayed on the bridges, although there's a ton of lines on there, uh, Commissioner Gabway, it's, 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 we've, there's actually a nice, you know, the, the, the main heart of that community is a nice, nice grade, nice slope. It drops off on the one end where, where we're obviously looking at doing around twenty grinder pumps, not the full seventy-nine, it's just twenty, most will be on gravity. And with that, it actually, uh, we've stayed all out of the environmental and tried to, you know, be as, be as, you know, generous as we can to the, the, you know, the wetland that runs between the, the two projects now, the Magnolia Ridge and, and Magnolia Ridge West is very well preserved, kind of between that, and, and with, with good buffers around it. So, and, and all the things that we've talked about earlier, he's, we've looked at it with both staff and, and, and Tony with engineer and this, that, and we see absolutely, you know, there's nothing of, of the substantive comments that are, that is not absolutely, you know, solvable in several ways. You know, in, in the case of the wetland, you can build a retaining wall right next to it and come up and, and create that instead of tying your slopes in, or you can slide the road over ten feet, and, and that, there would be examples of that, which are, are all, you know, minimal issues, i- issues. The, the, the point I would make is like, even, well, even with this, it's concept, you know, it always blows my mind when concept now is a whole different world than what it ever was. You used to come and say, it's seventy-nine, you know, townhouses meets this, we're, you know, rough sketch and this, that, it's a whole different world now. This is two and a half years or two years of work to get here, to be in this position, to even present. And, uh, it's, 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 you know, uh, between here and, and next, we go to site, detailed site plan. And that's just on a level of getting all these little details worked out, so we see no problem with anything that's written in comment and been working closely with staff and, and as we always do, so.
Now, the detailed site plan, you have to come back before this board to get that approved again, correct?
I believe, definitely for the subdivision, uh, the preliminary, Mary Beth can probably answer that better than me, or Chris? Chris, actually, I'm sorry, Chris.
The detailed site plan is step two of the site plan process, that would not come back to the planning commission. The, the project also needs to go through the subdivision process, which is a three-step process. Step two, also known as the preliminary subdivision plan, would come to the planning commission. And at the end, the final plat's would come to the planning commission for certification. Did that answer your question?
Yes, very well, thank you.
The, the summary in the staff recommendations, it states in the staff recommendations that the outstanding substantive issues outlined throughout the staff report have the potential to alter the design, layout, and or functionality of the proposed project. With all of the discussions we've had and everything up to this point, having so many unanswered questions at this point, with like what you said, two and a half years working on the project, I get it. I, I'm, I'm surprised with that amount of unanswered questions. And I personally would be, uh, looking to defer this back so you guys could come back and get some of the stuff cleaned up and, and re-present it.
Yeah, this is, this is concept by nature, which ladies say, we're, we're more than confident, we've talked to staff, we've talked to Mary Beth, we've talked to Jerry, we've talked to Chris, and everybody that has comment here. And all, all, all of this is, is very solvable and, and, and it really is beyond that. This is also, not to, for that matter to, to, uh, you know, the, the commissioner or not, this is also tied to the timeframes that we set on the TDRs last year, which also become an impact on, on this as well, and, and we, you know, bringing this forward to, to, uh, you know, uh, we've got timelines that we're working on, but, but this is well beyond concept of everything I've ever even done within the county of, of concept approval. I mean, it, concept used to be you'd come in and say, hey, look, this is what we're thinking, we're thinking this on this, and is that good, and you got your concept, and now you go, now you go get to the detailed site plan. You, you, it's not ordinary to do, it's not ordinary to even have these issues, this many issues on a concept plan. Maybe, maybe the ordinances have changed and it, and it's heading in that direction, but it's, it's, it's very, you know, you, you get your concept approval, and then you begin working on your detailed, you know, preliminary plan and your detailed site plan, which answers all of these things, and, and we have, there'll be no substantial change, substantial change to that plan, I assure you from my professional opinion, from an engineer's professional opinion, and from what we've talked to with staff, this point, there's, there's, it's, it's a very easy kind of, uh, all of this is very normal and very, you know, we, we might, we'll make another thirty or forty changes on this project as we go forward before we tweak it and get it right, and, and, and have it completely done. And that's very common, so it's really not, you know, setting the bar, so.
Out of curiosity, and I know you guys work hand in hand with the county staff and county employees and planning and zoning, any idea, um, director, how many hours the county has had to dedicate toward this project to this point?
Great question. So there's a lot of agencies involved, um, how many review rounds have you done? Three. So there's been three rounds of review, um, I don't even know that I could begin to estimate, but a lot of time, a lot of hours.
Before you walk away, if we defer this, how much more will you all have to do, just staff?
Pardon me?
If we defer this versus sending it on to the next step?
Yes.
What's the difference in time for staff?
They would have to submit a revised concept plan, which we would have to re-review, instead of going directly onto the.
Even more importantly, this thing's due to expire next week.
Correct.
So, um, I, I'd like somebody to walk me through the timeline, what they would go through if it expires versus what they've been through now, are they starting from scratch if it expires, or?
They can ask for a one-year extension before the twenty-seventh. If it does expire on the twenty-seventh, then they would have to start over. But they can request an extension if they don't get approval.
The applicant can request a one-year extension.
And what, what would be the repercussions for the applicant if he had to do that?
Well, John Mattingly here. The issue in this case is a little bit different because of the vesting or grandfathering provision that the county commissioners put in place, I think it was last year.
Yes, sir.
Um, which increases the percentage of commercial and TDRs. So while, yes, technically we can extend it out a year, I don't think that's really what the applicant.
Can you speak into the mic, John?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, listen.
Thank you, sorry.
Sorry about that, Ms. Williams.
No, no worries.
I, I don't think that's what the applicants wanna go towards because of the, the grandfathering provision. I don't wanna speak for you, but I'm assuming.
You, you, you've got it correct, and, you know, Mr. Freeland, to the other part of this, in the schedule portion of this, we submitted initially in, um, and this is on the cover sheet here, let me flip to it to make sure I get it right. We submitted initially in May of two thousand and twenty-two, or in April of two thousand and twenty-two, and the comments were due in May of two thousand and twenty-two. The next follow-on submission from that was actually April or December of two thousand and twenty-two, so there was a seven-month lag there. And on the surface I could see is to be like, well, what took seven months, right, what, what were you guys doing? That was the other presentation that I was in front of this board for about the Chesapeake Boulevard extension that went through the middle of the property, that was actually dropped from the twenty forty comprehensive plan, but wa- wasn't quite there yet in, in being, uh, being able to be adopted into the master plan, so there was a a pre- presentation and an application and then a presentation to the, uh, to the board for that approval to get to the point where we were able to continue forward with the site plan that you're seeing in front of you now. You know, little bit of sympathy I would ask for as well, is the week that this got submitted, I was laying in a bed after being in a car accident. And there's some things on the plan that I would say isn't as clear as I would have liked them to be coming in the door. But I think I can absolutely say, again, with a hundred percent certainty to everybody here, is all of these issues, all the substantiative issues, right, and substantiative, I guess, definition of substantiative being important and real, and, and believe that they are, and I believe they can realistically be addressed and stay with this concept that you're seeing here, with the seventy-nine units, the general layout that you're seeing. There would be some technical changes in there, but I don't believe it's anything that would be considered a substantial change to the plan to where it, it would deviate far from an approval that we were given tonight.
So when, when were you made aware of substantive changes?
We had a meeting about it to discuss about it with staff. We were, actually requested a copy of the draft report, but it actually, I guess, had gone out already to the board. And that's when we saw these issues and immediately had conversations with both Director Cosgrove and Director Cook about them to say, hey, you know, this is how we're seeing these things, these are all things that we believe that we can work through. And I believe there were positive conversations, so, you know, it's like, yeah, we believe this is all things that we can work through. The variances in case the roadways, again, were the same exact variances that we asked for with Magnolia Ridge. So it's, it's very consistent with what we've worked through with staff already and the departments to get to this point.
So when was that, was it last week, last month?
Uh, so we, the report came out Thursday, I believe. And met with, uh, Mr. Cosgrove and I met yesterday?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to establish the timeline that when staff notified the engineer that there were substantive changes.
Commissioner Freeland, we actually had, you know, Tamara had reached out to us to have a call, and we had a call probably about three or four weeks ago, Tamara.
It was after, um, the third plan got reviewed and comments were, um, ready to go out.
And we had, and we had Chris and we had everybody from staff just kind of talk about it and say, here, here's what we've got, here's what we're looking at on, on the substantive, and we started talking about even solutions even on that phone call and some of these things, some of the things we didn't feel were correct, which the pump, grinder pumps were one of them, they're, they're, it's, it's nowhere in any, they're not allowed and it's used very common in, in, in many, uh, scenarios. So, you know, you gotta kind of cipher through that, and when, and, and in concept, they're putting things, and, and once again, it's an opinion from a staff on, on interpreting their, their ordinance and, and its opinion on maybe us interpreting the same ordinance from, 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 from our perspective, and then finding, you know, where you go from that, so it's very common, I'm not saying, I mean, it's, it's been healthy, it's been a healthy process, we work with staff well, they work with us well, as far as understanding what we could do, what we can't do and move forward. And I think, you know, so we already started working, they, they just can't, you can't resubmit things, once, once this plan is submitted, you can't change on the fly, we changed the plan the next day on a couple things and said, we're here, this, it's all that. And, and, and Chris is very correct in saying, well, we can't do that until, you know, we're, we've gotta take the plan that was submitted, and it's, it's what's going through the review process. And then, so we'll go. So this is, I mean, I think to, to be where we are, to be at concept, and with all the other consequences of this, of, of even things that have changed, this is a very, um, modest use of the property to, to actually be, those timelines were part of that. You know, we were moving forward to actually stay with that with a, a very minimal use of the property, knowing that we wanted something that was gonna be, you know, a, 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 you know, to, to, to move through the process for at least, and, and, and less impact on the county, so. So, I mean, I think for concept, we're, I mean, jeez, I, I, I actually looked up the definition of concept, you know, through this whole process, because it's a general, you know, it, it's a, uh, you know, a, a general ideal or a general notion, and, and it's not, and it's, we're, we're, we're very deep in, into this, and we'll be deeper, and, but these are all, you know, substantive, I, I agree with how Tony explained that, and it's definitely, uh, things that, you know, staff has to write on, on the report, I understand that. But, but will there be a substantial change to this layout? Absolutely not. This will be what, you know, it's, this is seventy-nine townhouses with this road layout, and we're talking about moving, moving something ten foot, but the wall, the wall, the, the, uh, subwalls, where we're doing a ba- no problem at all on the, on a, on a townhouse like that, it's very common, done all the time. And so there's nothing here, construction-wise, that's, that's even close to being a problem, and, and so what we're asking for tonight is we're asking for the, the blessing of the concept approval, which is, which is, uh, from there, it's, you know, and now we go back into that, now we have another year to go through the detailed site plan. And versus coming back and if we had to change or modify whatever we were doing and go to a whole different concept, that's, I can assure you, that's a whole lot more work on staff. Versus then going from here to a, to a site plan, to, to a, to a detailed site plan, which is kind of just continuing on this path of, of design we're showing and moving forward.
And I will say, if they get to the detailed site plan and there is a la- a major change to the design, it would come back to the planning commission.
Very good.
Right. Understood, I just, I remember last year, a very painful half an hour of trying to articulate where a specific spot in the process would be to be able to be grandfathered in under previous um, TDRs, et cetera, previous zonings, before the new tax amendments went in. And that was a painful hour, we were all sitting in this room together and it's our painful half hour, trying to articulate those words. And the commissioners at that point were very clear to say, you know what, this is the, this is the spot in the sand, and then it's one year from that date. And if can't make stuff work at that point, then it, it, I'm not gonna say it's a no-go, but that's not, that's not the words we used, but there was a lot of discussion that night.
But I, I, I think we've quite honestly hit that easily, I don't think, this is a very normal process with staff of how you work on a project, this is not something that's, you, 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 I mean, projects have thirty-five comments sometimes that you still have to work on when you're leaving your concept and heading to your detailed site plan, it's, it's, this is very common, so this is, th- this would be a derailment of something that I think would be very unfair and unjust in, in this moment of where we are compared to what, what, what that impact is. And, and we, we, and we did talk about that, and, and the, the big thing happened to be the, uh, the seven months, uh, of, of what went on in, in finding out that there was a, that, that roadway that it was kind of a, a road, a sketch, that somebody drew a pencil mark through this property and said, maybe a future road go through, and all that was taken away, and the new transportation plan, it's approved, it's gone. We still had to go forward on a tax amendment, which was a, a decision we made with staff, and knowing, and that was six or seven months of this process, so we've been working diligently, Chris, I guess what I would say, it's not like we've been sandbagging or holding back, we've been working diligently to get to this, have worked hard. Tony unfortunately was the person who got hit by the woman driving northbound, uh, on Route Four, uh, you know, the wrong way. Uh, a- a- and, and, uh, northbound in the southbound lane, so, so, and that, you know, and that's, I don't think that, you know, that might be a few weeks, but it's just, it's, it's nothing that we haven't, we work diligently, I don't have a project that I don't say, go, 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 that's all we do, you know, 'cause, because you can, there, there's constant factors, the timing of these, and when, when folks in a situation, uh, like the county commissioner at that moment, when you pass that, it's hard to understand without being in the va- being in the middle, but to understand the true impact of those timelines, because there's already about ten of them working on top of those, and so we're all making our, our good guessments, and, and I, and I applaud what was done, I mean, I think that was fair, what was done, I think we fairly, you know, met, met our, met our a co- a, a, a position to be in a concept site plan approval to get that. Everything that we've talked about tonight is easily handled in, in detailed site plan movement and to move this project forward, and, 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 as I said, we've gone to a very modest use of the property to almost in, in sight of that, and it's been a little more challenging with that than I thought, but, uh, that's where we are.
And Tony, I would like to say I'm glad you're doing better.
Absolutely, yeah, that was quite a blessing.
Glad you're here with us, Tony.
Oh, thank you. I can feel the love, I can feel the love in the room. Oh, but, you know. Yeah, right, but Commissioner, I mean, that, what Tamara mentioned, this, you know, Tamara mentioned is absolutely something that we're willing to live by and die by, right, is, you know, between the engineers and the surveyors and our client working on this and the environmental folks that we've, you know, our team that we have on this, we believe that with this concept approval, we will be substantially the same plan once we get to approval. If it changes and Tamara looks at it and says, this ain't nowhere near what you gave us at planning commission, we, we will live by that, we will understand that we will need to come back. But it's just trying to move this forward, I believe there's definite solutions there, and I do believe at the end of the day, it's gonna be a good community for Prince Frederick. And that's just trying to get to that point in the project where we can start building some, some of the other prettier things that go into this stuff other than just the two line drawings.
And on a side note to this, US three oh one in Waldorf at Acton Lane is ten lanes wide. It's a US highway, and it carries substantially more traffic than Route Four, substantially more. Route Four in Prince Frederick is also ten lanes wide in front of, all the way from the Fox Run Shopping Center all the way down toward the firehouse, it's same ten lanes as Route three oh one and US three oh one is, but we can't seem to figure out how to handle the traffic. A, a small percentage of the traffic in Prince Frederick that Waldorf has over there. I don't understand it, uh, it's just, this is a side note, you guys are talking about, Calvert has the highest volume of vehicles per household in the state. I believe it's three point one vehicles per household. And I just, I'm looking at all of these developments and everything else saying, we're talking about the zoning and everything else coming up, the reason why I'm asking all these questions is because the future growth of Calvert and how far and how fast we expand on it is very important in my, in my, in my eyes.
I understand.
And that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm asking these questions, so I appreciate it.
And it's a good question, and, and you know, the, the one thing I would say to that, and Rodney's probably gonna smack me in the back of the head here because he won't talk, but, yeah, right, yeah, uh, kicking me in the leg.
Do it now.
No, I mean, this, this is really, when you go to the comprehensive plan, you go to what the vision of Prince Frederick was supposed to be, this is- was supposed to be. This is kind of what that, what this area was supposed to look like. Um, you know, when the project next door, Magnolia Ridge East came up, I actually got a call from one of the citizens, older gentleman in, in the community that said, hey, when's this going to get built? Because, you know, I, I live in a big piece of property. I don't really want to maintain it anymore. You know, there's, there's not a lot of options for me to live in a place where I can live and I can get right to the, right to the grocery store, right to, like, it's kind of in this hub of where you want people to live and try to work and with, you know, the commercial development coming on the corner there. I mean, it kind of creates that synergy in this area to hopefully keep people off of the roads and, and kind of use more local traffic. And I just, I do believe that this project, again, could have been a lot more impactful, could have been a lot more units and it's not. I think it's a good use of the land. I think it'll be, I think it'll be a great development at the end of the day. And I really think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and what, what they're trying to do for this area of the town center.
And Chris, one way I'll just go back to the numbers on it because I agree, impact is trouble. I, I agree with county commissioners in, in, in talking about the lack of future expansion and, and not being there because we have one Route Four and we have two choices, overload it and have to build bypasses around, which we know would be extremely expensive. And I, I think anybody in here, including Wilson, any committee I've ever sat on, I, I, I would make the argument from the developer builder that it's cheaper to buy and retire TDRs, do whatever you have to not to do that. And I, and I've supported that. And, and, and in this project, it's, it's seventy-nine units where three hundred and forty-two are allowed. It's twenty-three percent of the allowable density. It's, it's three point two five units per acre where it's allowed fourteen. So just to break down the numbers sense. So it's, it's a very, when I keep saying the modest use, it's, it's not, I'm not just saying that it's, it's, it's in the numbers. Like it, it's, it's, we've actually done something that we felt was a, a, a reasonable middle ground of all of those concerns. The environmental concerns, and that's after you take out the acreage for the wetlands. I mean, if it was twenty-six acres, you're minus two and you get the fourteen per that. And so it's, it's, it's a very, uh, very modest use. You can fit three hundred and forty-two. We had several designs of things that could have gone that route. Uh, apartment buildings with parking garages built into and wrapped in. There, there's definitely, you can create the product and that creates the traffic and creates the, a, a lot of, you know, everything that, you know, the, the search of concern. So we have, we have worked very hard to do what we really felt was right for the community and for the county. And, and, uh, you know, just, just in, 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 in your thought process as far as moving forward on, on the decision. And that's where this concept, you know, with concept approval tonight keeps this pro, concept in place, you know? And, and if it doesn't, then, then it's, it's, it's kind of, we're back to the drawing board and, and it's kind of, uh, yeah, we don't want to be there. We want to do this. We, we think this that. And, and I'll just state again, I mean, if you could see the detail even on the plans that are submitted, that's called concept. And, and I agree, it's staff. You have to do it now. It's, the development's a whole different world than it was fifteen years with the regular. I don't even know how they do it. I don't even know how staff figures out what, cause we get lost in the ordinance. I mean, it's, there's so many different conflicting. We've heard town center ordinance and Calvert County ordinance and some things rule and other, you know, one and not the other. It's a lot to it. It's a very, it's very technical. But this is, I, I don't know what it should be called, but it's far beyond a concept, but, but it, but it's, it's, it's a very thorough concept. And, and like you say, we, we, this is the design. This is what you'll see when you see the subdivision process. That's what it'll look like. What, things we've talked about tonight, you, you will vary, the, the, the circle there is one of the questions. Well, there are going to be private roads and they are maintained with HIA. And we can build a circle if we want. Staff made a comment, they weren't, they weren't happy with the circle. I don't mind the comment. I'm like, okay, get rid of it. I don't care. You know, like I, I don't need it. It's going to cost me an extra fifty, a hundred grand. We were doing it to slow down traffic for the safety of children. And for that, I'm fine with whatever staff tells me, but that, that's one of the substantive issues. You know, the, a road to nowhere that goes out. We, we had the commercial pieces and we said, we're just kind of going to show that something that branches out to that. Well, and Chris makes the proper point, but we don't know what that is. We don't, we don't know what that is. We want to know. No problem with that. So, so it's, it's that kind of stuff. And, and it's, and like I say, I would say for staff's sake, I mean, staff's doing what they should be doing. It's nothing. It's not, you know, it's not, I don't know what to say, like argumentative anyway. It's just, it, it is, it is just pointing out, here's some things we're looking at. But it's all, I think, very minimal for what, what, what you would ever see with a change in this plan. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gertz.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? What would you all like to do? I'd prefer to defer. You want to make that motion?
I've got a question for the county attorney before, before that. If, if the planning commission votes to defer the project, does that negate the expiration?
Yes, it does. Because the ordinance is written where, wherein concept approval has to be obtained prior to the May deadline. So a deferral wouldn't give them concept approval unless there was a meeting, another.
Can't hear. Sorry.
Unless there was another meeting between now and then, the deadline.
So I, I think you're telling me if we were to defer it, it still would expire next week?
Correct. But I think the, the grandfather vesting provision actually runs in May, not next week. I, I could be wrong on that.
Their plan, their plan, according to the memo, is the twenty-seventh of April, correct?
So that date is April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, and it's based on when the conceptual site plan was submitted? And they can ask for a one-year exken, extension of that date? What John is speaking to are text amendments, which also have dates involved and affect the project.
So the, the artificial vesting or grandfather provision runs, I believe, May twelfth. So any extension, you can get up to a year extension, but the practical effect, as we were just discussing, is that by May twelfth, if they don't get it by May twelfth, they lose the benefit of that grandfather provision.
But you have to also remember, I mean, that, that's going to impact staff. It's going to impact the developer to have to go through other hoops. So I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
In regard to C S P R dash one four two eight, two eight, Magnolia Ridge West, the planning commission approves with the recommended conditions as listed above.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuohy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye.
Two opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda, item eight, major subdivision applications for preliminary review and action. We do not have any on the agenda tonight. Moving on to item nine, long-range planning. We have one project, item nine A, Solomon's Architectural Review Committee, case number S A R C twenty twenty-three dash four. It's a proposed new single-family dwelling. Good evening, planning commissioners. Um, my name's Jessica Katano, um, planner three with the Department of Planning and Zoning. This evening, I'm here to go over a Solomon's Architectural Review Committee recommendation on case number twenty twenty-three dash oh four for the Selner residence. Uh, joining me this evening is Brent Hutchinson, representing the Solomon's Architectural Review Committee and the architect for the project, Mr. Doug Norway. So before I get into the project, I just wanted to briefly go over the architectural review process and why we're here this evening. The Solomon's Architectural Review Committee reviews applicable external design features within the town center in accordance with the guidelines and provisions of the Solomon's Town Center Master Plan and Zoning Ordinance. They then make recommendations to the planning commission in writing. And per the Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinance, the planning commission may delegate authority to its chairperson or its secretary to approve design features that are both consistent with the master plan and zoning ordinance and comply with the recommendation from the committee. So with that, uh, we'll go ahead and hop into the presentation. Uh, once again, I'm here to present the Solomon's Architectural Review Committee or S A R C case twenty twenty-three dash zero four. Um, so for the Selner residence located at one four three two seven Sedwick Avenue in Solomon's, Maryland. The proposed dwelling is located on an undeveloped lot in the Avondale subdivision between two residential uh, single-family dwellings on either side. The property is located in the town center's planning area C, subarea six, and is located south of Lower Road. And this slide is just meant to give you a better context of the location of the undeveloped lot in the neighborhood and how, uh, other buildings are kind of oriented to one another. The Solomon's Architectural Review Committee reviewed the project at their regular meeting on April third, twenty twenty-three. The committee identified two architectural design features that they felt, that they determined, excuse me, do not comply with the Solomon's Town Center Master Plan and Zoning Ordinance. The committee recommended the planning commission not approve the application based upon the following two facts. The first being the applicant is proposing a stone material at the water table and chimney. Shown on this slide is the Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinance table six dash three titled Architectural Design Criteria. The table specifies the different types of permissible, uh, building materials and stone is not listed as an allowable material, uh, south or north of Lower Road. And the second justification, uh, for their decision is the dwelling is proposing, is proposed to be a three-story building in planning area C. The committee referenced article six dash two point oh two B of the Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinance, which states in planning areas B and C, the height of the structures is limited to two stories plus a habitable roof with a six twelve to twelve twelve pitch, but not to exceed thirty-six feet. The dwelling is proposed to be a three-story, it, it's proposed as a three-story with a habitable roof. The committee further discussed the concern of height, proportion, rhythm, and scale. And when you look at the table, um, it will bring you to, uh, it references those features to the architectural design manual. The Solomon's Town Center Architectural Design Manual, Guidelines for Architectural Review Applicants was adopted by the, uh, Calvert County Planning Commission in two thousand and ten. Uh, the section referencing building mass provides guidance for height and proportion. And the guidelines state new buildings that disrupt the scale and rhythm of the streetscape are discouraged. The graphics on this slide are examples taken from the design manual for encouraged and discouraged examples of height and proportion variations. And these are the proposed elevations submitted by the applicant for all sides of the proposed dwelling. Uh, the driveway will be coming off of Sedwick Avenue on the rear of the property. Uh, so the frontage, uh, I believe will be on the, the left, the two left renderings on the screen. This slide is a digital material board provided by the applicant for all proposed exterior features outlined in red. You can see the proposed, they are proposing a mountain ledge style stone accent at the water table and the chimney. And these next two slides are just existing conditions of the streetscape in Solomon's, uh, from Solomon's Island Road. The photo on the top left is the dwelling, uh, which would be directly north of the undeveloped lot. And the photo on the bottom is a straight-on view. Oh, sorry. And this next one on the top photo, uh, you'll see both of the neighboring dwellings looking north. And on the bottom photo, you can do the same, but you're viewing them looking south. Again, some of the concern from the committee was a significant variation in height and proportion. Um, and I believe the site plan, which is not provided on this, in this presentation, was showing a, that they're building up to, um, the front and side setbacks, which are fifteen feet, uh, on the front and six to the side. Next steps, we're just asking the planning commission to review and discuss the architectural review application, uh, the sections of the Solomon's Town Center Master Plan and Zoning Ordinance and the design manual, and, uh, go over the architectural review committee's recommendation. You guys have any questions?
It's my understanding that you mentioned, you touched on it earlier, the zoning down there is for, I believe the right word is zoning, was for two-story dwelling under thirty-six feet, correct?
Yes. So this property, uh, is zoned, um, it's in the planning area C, subarea six. Um, and let's see, where's the, it's in the zoning ordinance that in planning areas B and C, the height of the structures is limited to two stories plus a habitable roof with a six twelve and a twelve twelve pitch not to exceed thirty-six feet.
And what they're proposing is a three-story building at thirty-six feet, nine inches plus, correct?
That's from, that would be from foundation to chimney, I believe. And I, I'm not exactly sure, but I believe we would be doing the height from the foundation to the ridge line, which is thirty-four feet and nine and three eighths inches. And the architect is here, um, and if he wanted to speak on any of his design features as well. If you don't have any more questions, of course, if you do.
Any questions for Jessica?
I have a question.
Yes.
When the Solomon's Architectural Review Committee rejects this project, as they did, is there an option for the homeowner, the, to return with changes and, and ask the Solomon's Review Committee for, to approve a different model?
Yep. A lot of times, uh, what the architectural review committee will offer is, uh, so that the applicant doesn't have to come back. They'll say, we approve this, uh, as long as you send in additional, uh, uh, products for, in place of the stone. And then that's how we write up our recommendation, uh, to the planning commission administrator. Um, and then she'll look through that and make sure that those conditions are met as well.
And did the, the committee offer that or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. They wanted to, uh, try to move forward and see if they could, um, I guess.
So the owner did not, the owner did not take up the opportunity to resubmit something for approval?
Correct.
The Solomon's Town Center Architectural Design Manual is a public document, correct?
Yes.
And it was available to the architect?
Yes.
Or the homeowner?
Yes. I mean, it's online. Um, we don't give it out, um, unless it's asked for. Uh, but again, the materials that I, that I know that the, um, committee goes on is the, is from that table because it's less of a guideline and more of a, of a regulation.
Are there any more questions for Jessica? Any for the architect or the applicant? Come forward and state your name and where you live.
Hello, I'm Doug Norway. I work with Lawrence Able and Associates Limited in Plato. I live in California, Maryland, but I'm the designer on this project for Mr. Selner. He's unable to attend tonight. Uh, we did have the meeting, as Jessica sta-stated. Uh, it was a Zoom call where I presented the architectural design, the concept in the spirit of the ordinance, in my opinion. And, uh, one thing I did want to mention is any resubmission or appeal or anything of that nature was kind of deferred until this session because this, this is what we learned of a new step in the process, that it would come here. So I, we did talk about potential, and I even mentioned, so if I offered to change the stone, which I did have a reasoning behind it, and I'd like, I'll just discuss a brief thing on that in a minute, but two brick is an option. But I did somewhat disagree with the habitable roof on the third stories. As it mentioned, was, um, thirty-four foot nine to the ridge. So I'm clearly underneath that thirty-six foot requirement.
But it is three stories.
I am, can I hand out something which she wasn't able to?
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
You're good. You're good.
Just stepped the limits here. Thank you.
And while you're doing that, I'd like to compliment you. It's a gorgeous house.
Oh, yeah.
It's a great design.
That's what we were discussing earlier. Really is beautiful.
Meets, meets the spirit of the ordinance.
Meets, meets the spirit of the ordinance.
And I didn't present, put the elevations up, so I, just for the public so that they can see what you guys are seeing without the markups. These are the elevations that were provided to the Architectural Review Committee on the screen as well.
So on the first level, I, I have mainly a garage element, and then we do have a covered porch. I do have a small game room at the front of the facility on Sol, Solomons Road. The, my, my approach to this was I'm considering it as a two-story element with a habitable roof. This roof element and what I had sketched in my handout here, if you, I, I just elected to disconnect the roof elements, where if you continue on the roof below, the lower portion of it, and continue it on up, it would be a roof, and in my opinion, a habitable roof. So I do have one bedroom and one bathroom and a living area up on that upper level. I'll call that a habitable roof level, simply because, again, I just disconnected that roof where I have a roof deck walking out. Whereas if I had a dormer situation, as I sketched in this, where you would have on some of the houses to the upper north and to the south, they do have features such as this, where you have a dormer and you have maybe a small little walkout deck. The one actually on, anyhow, like I had mentioned in here, I was projecting that lower roof element up to the top roof element, treating this as a habitable roof. So, and I'm, again, clearly underneath that 36-foot. In concert with the features to the left and the right of us, if you go from the corner of Woodburn Lane, you have a commercial CD Cafe building, which is two tall stories. And then it has high-pitched roofs with what appears, I've never been upstairs, so I couldn't tell you if that actually has an upper level, but there are windows in that upper level. There's also a deck element up top above that level. So that's even taller than this element. It has a gate feature which has an appearance of a deck on that upper level. Then you have the two-story home, which Jessica presented on the right-hand side, where that upper level is a roof, the first floor, so that's, you know, one floor with a habitable roof, I would say. The one to the left of us is a two-story with a habitable roof. Further down, you have a couple of two-story elements with windows on the third level. And then once you pass C Street, the fifth and sixth home north of this is a fourth level, appearance, where I even have an upper roof deck element there. And then I have another three level with an upper roof leveled element there. So I do feel I'm in concert, clearly, you know, well below those two items, which we did discuss in the board meeting, and the board did mention, I guess they don't meet the criteria, but they're there. I did get information, but I was advised until after we hold this meeting. Then if I couldn't get acknowledgement or some type of approval here of this, that I would seek appeal. I did get permission from the owner. My selection of the stone is a linear type of stone with hard edges. It's not a random rubble round, so it's in concert with the brick feature. There are over half a dozen homes in Solomon Island. I drove around that entire facility, and there's actually foundations with small low-water tables of CMU that's either painted, natural finished, rock finished. There's a home at the end of Sedwick, granted it's on an end street, that does have stone on the face of the house, including the chimney. And in addition to that, the Catholic Church actually has split-faced block on top of brick on their addition behind it. Including directly behind this off of Sedwick, there's a memorial cemetery that has brick with split-faced block on top of it with a marble cap. So there are elements out there that I was just comparing to. I was also, in the meeting, we had the Zoom meeting, there was a mention of one home near the Catholic Church that used to be stone that doesn't exist anymore. So there was stone on that island at some point, and there's still features that are similar to this. But I myself and the owner would be willing to submit a brick for approval for the water table and the chimney. But I really want to keep this design intact, and I'm feeling it's in concert with that flow.
Did you give, did you give the Architectural Review Board the same presentation you gave us as far as the roof lines and the explanation of the, how it's a habitable roof, not a third floor?
Not at that time, no. But I did not agree with them that it was a three-story element. That's why I was stating afterwards, I spoke to Jessica.
Right.
Discuss the Board of Appeals option.
I mean, on a couple of the drawings, you show lower level as ground level.
Yes.
First floor, which is what most people would call the second floor, and then you had labeled it as the second floor, which most people would call the third floor. And I, I get what you're saying. I would.
And that's why I called it those elements, because I'm not feeling that this is a third level. Also, that's the other reason why I held that upper part back farther. So that whole area is a walk-around deck. If you look at those three D elevations, you'll see that that's actually just a walkout deck from that roof where I broke that roof line from that top part. But I did keep everything below that 36 feet, except for the chimney, but that's allowed to actually be higher than that 36 feet.
So I understand that the Architecture Review Board offered the, offered for you to come back for an additional review? Is that what I understood earlier?
So they were, they kind of went through what has happened previously when applicants submit materials that are not permissible. And he, the applicant, did not want to take that avenue. And again, he wouldn't have had to come back necessarily. They, the motion would have been a conditional motion, at least for the, the materials. Most likely, that staff could verify it was a permissible material that's replacing the stone. And I really can't speak for the three stories, whether or not they would ask for that to come back or not.
But those are the two reasons.
Those were the two reasons, yes.
It was suggested that it not be approved.
Yes. And again, I have Brent Hutchinson here as well, who's representing our Solomons Architectural Review Committee, who may be able to speak a little bit more on the.
Could you come forward, Mr. Hutchinson, please? Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Brent Hutchinson. I live at 101 Lower Road in Solomons. And I'm here to represent the Architectural Review Committee.
Appreciate you coming out, and I know it's getting to be a late evening, but as the presentation that was given to us and the example, or the, the example of the description or the interpretation of a third floor versus habitable roof, that was not given to you guys during the original review?
He didn't present it as a habitable roof when he made his presentation. Like you said, he has the, the stories labeled as lower level, first level, second level.
Right.
I think the intent of the zoning ordinance for Solomons is to have Victorian-era style homes, especially south of Lower Road. And the intent is to have residential-scale homes along, in Avondale and along those areas in Solomons, so that we don't have three-story tall buildings with roof decks and elevators. The two houses that he mentioned that are near C, just on the other side of C Street, were presented when the ordinance had been changed regarding stepping back, or adding, I guess, trying to think how it was presented, or is, it was for commercial projects and stepping back, allowing extra height if there was commercial projects, commercial use on the first floor. Those buildings didn't have commercial use on the first floor, but they were the first ones that were presented after that ordinance had gone through. And there was a lot of feedback from the public regarding those two buildings. And so the Architectural Review Committee has been trying to make sure that buildings that get to that height aren't allowed.
Well, excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry.
The feedback that you received from the general public, was that based on the fact that it, those houses don't look like they belong there and are an eyesore?
You have two-story, 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 tall, tall.
Victorian, Victorian, Victorian.
Right, exactly.
Free form.
Three-story or three-and-a-half story or three-story with a roof deck, and they were presented as being a habitable roof. And one of them, I believe, has an elevator that has a, you know, has access to the habitable roof. They were just getting out of control and weren't in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance. And so we've been trying to make sure that we're keeping these houses so that Solomons remains a nice place to walk and has the same residential scale without having tall houses and commercial buildings as well that are three stories in height. And so if this was two stories with a third story in the gable, if you will, and a habitable roof, I think it would be more acceptable to the spirit of the ordinance, to the letter of the ordinance, and to the Architectural Review Committee in, you know, intent and trying to enforce that. This looks like a three-story house to me, and to the members of the committee.
So.
That's the way it was interpreted.
If this is denied, it would, the, the property owners and architect would have the opportunity to come back to you with an alternative design?
Certainly, if they can make modifications to the design and re-present it for review.
So I have a question. How?
Go ahead, Lisa, go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so the height, how tall is this building versus any other building that is already existing in Solomons?
I don't know that I can answer that. We were mostly focusing.
Is it within the regulations of the height of the buildings that already exist?
Well, the regulation just states it needs to be under 36 feet, as well as the, the different, the story variations. Again, we were, we were just focusing on the streetscape and the, the scale of the neighboring buildings it was, it was right next to. But I don't know the exact heights of other buildings or when exactly they were approved and under what ordinance or any, any of those details. I just know what the ordinance states now and how it was interpreted by the committee.
So it's the walkable third, second-level decks that was shunned upon, pretty much, correct?
It's actually the fact that it's a three-story house is what doesn't meet the ordinance.
But i- if it's within the height restriction, does that matter if it's a three-story or not?
It does according to the letter of the ordinance. The ordinance says two stories with a habitable roof.
With a habitable roof.
So a habitable roof is like an attic room, for example. A room that's inside the roof, if you will.
So you, it's no access to the outside to be able to sit on your deck and?
No, it's not that. It's just that it, the massing, the massing of the building is still lower than if you have three full stories of full-height walls. As in this case.
Mr. Maddley wants to say something.
I, I just have a quick question, because I, I did not have the definition of habitable roof. So there, there is definitive criteria to distinguish a habitable roof from a third floor?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, but it's, it's something that your committee has worked with before?
Yes.
Do you have a working definition that you use, or is it case-by-case?
It's case-by-case.
Okay. And I did want to clear up one thing for everyone. There is, with regards to the architectural review, if there is a new element, I believe an applicant is allowed to get that added to the, I think, what do you, what do you call it? The Architectural Design Manual. So they're not just forced to either appeal our decision if we're negative, et cetera. There's also a provision where they can go in and ask that if it's consistent with the plan, it's consistent with the Town Center plan, they can actually get that element, habitable roof, what have you, changed in the Architectural Design Manual itself, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hutchinson, share with us your background, why, how you ended up on the Architectural Review Committee for Solomons.
I'm an architect that lived here in Calvert County since 75, and I've been an architect here in Calvert County since 1989. Own my own business since 92. And I volunteered on the Architectural Review Committee in Solomons, couldn't tell you how long.
Thanks for your service.
Welcome.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
That we accept the plan, I'm sorry, the Architectural Review Committee's recommendation to deny the application on SARC 2023-04.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Thank you, Mr. Toohey. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Halls in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Denied, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Being recorded, thank you. And didn't we miss the nine o'clock break?
I guess we did, yes. They were talking. We're having too much fun.
I think we're the last actual items on the agenda, so the question is, do you want to push on through or do the break?
What would you like?
How long are they?
Push on through. Very brief, I believe. We could be done in 10 minutes or less.
We're gonna push on through.
Okay.
We're here now.
10 minutes or less is long, is that a mess?
Yes.
Five. I believe Ms. Blake introduced item 10B. I'm Jenny Plummer-Walker. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Long Range Planner. I'm joined by Jesse Clark, Planner One. Be going through the overview of the adequate public facilities for schools and giving the background on item 10C, and Mr. Clark will be going through the details of 10C. You received my memo dated April 5th in advance of the meeting. And as you know, the Department of Planning and Zoning prepares the Adequate Public Facilities Report twice a year in April and November. It was presented to you at the November meeting, and then at the Planning Commission's December meeting, our former Commissioner Steve Jones raised a question about the adequacy of schools and the chair requests that staff go through the Adequate Public Facilities Report for the spring in a little greater detail. So that's what brings us here this evening. In November 2022, the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission held a joint public hearing on adequate public facilities in this very room. And at that point, the proposal for the public hearing was to remove the regulations for roads and schools and to put it into the county code and to add public facilities for other facilities, including water and sewer, stormwater management, solid waste and recycling, fire rescue and emergency management services, and law enforcement services. That was approved and put into the new county code, which, or the new chapter of the county code, which became effective December 9th, 2022. I mentioned at the December meeting, I would give an overview of the Calvert County Public Schools Educational Facilities Master Plan. So I'll do that very briefly. The plan is available on Calvert County Public Schools website, so if anybody's. so if anybody's interested in it, they can look at it. It's over a hundred pages long. So each year, the Calver County Public School staff prepares an educational facilities master plan. It is required as part of state law. There's a commerce section which I won't reiterate. But it includes background data, population projections, residential building permit, which, permit data which Mr. Clark prepares and provides to the school staff. School site analysis by geographic area, so north, middle, and south, plus the, um, the general facilities that encompass the whole county, like Calver Country School and the Career and Technology Center. It also includes birth rates and, um, birth rates to death ratios, public and private school enrollment, graduation, excuse me, graduation rate, enrollment projections for each school from one through seven years and then a tenth year out, a facilities inventory, and a facilities needs summary. And then, for example, the current plan, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four School Facilities Master Plan notes that Beach Elementary Replacement Project is currently underway and that the Northern Middle School project funding will allow design to start in fiscal year twenty twenty-four with construction request from twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven. So the Calver County Public School staff prepares that draft report and sends it out for comment. We receive a draft at the Planning and Zoning Department, which we review and then make any comments. And then the Director of Planning and Zoning provides a letter to the Superintendent of the School Board or Calver County Public Schools that the plan is consistent with the county comprehensive plan. The school staff must provide their enrollment projections to the Maryland Department of Planning for the review by the state. And the state compares the local jurisdictions' projections with the state's own enrollment projections. And if those two enrollment projections are within five percent of each other, the local government can use its own projection in the submission of their facilities master plan. Typically, the Board of Education reviews the plan in June and, um, reviews and approves the plan in June, and then it's submitted to the state in July. So that concludes my comments on the overview. Are there any questions?
Good job, thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten C, the Adequate Public Facilities Report for Schools for April first. So Adequate Public Facilities for, um, are, excuse me, Adequate Public Facilities Regulations are a growth management tool that restricts, limits development until facilities are adequate. The county adopted Adequate Public Facilities for Roads and for Schools in nineteen eighty-eight. As I men- mentioned, in December twenty twenty-two, the board, the recommendation of the Planning Commission expanded those types of facilities into the code. And the code states, "Schools shall be considered adequate if the enrollment for each public school serving the development is less than a hundred percent of the local rated capacity." So we're, we have the April first report to present. The code limits, excuse me, limits the delay of the final approval of residential subdivisions or residential developments due to sole, solely lack of school capacity for up to six years from preliminary approval. And then age-restricted housing, so housing for seniors that meet the other requirements of the Calver County zoning ordinance are exempt from the Adequate Public Facilities for Schools requirements. The Adequate Public Facilities that are in the county zoning ordinance do not apply to the municipalities of North Beach and Chesapeake Beach. They have their own planning and zoning authority, and to date, they have not adopted Adequate Public Facilities Regulations. So that concludes my remarks, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Clark to share highlights from this April report.
Evening Commissioners.
Evening.
Jesse Clark, Planner One. Concerning the adequacy of the public facilities for schools, since the Fall twenty twenty-two report, there were no changes to the open and closed status. As of Fall twenty twenty-two, the only one over capacity was Mount Harmony Elementary. As of April of this year, Mount Harmony Elementary is the only one, again, over capacity at one hundred and two point three percent of the twelve elementary schools, Mount Harmony being the only one over capacity. Foresto, Beach, and Plum Point are between ninety and ninety-nine point nine percent capacity. The six middle schools are also under capacity, Northern Middle being between ninety, ninety-nine point nine percent. And of the four high schools, none of them are over capacity, Northern High School being between ninety and ninety-nine point nine percent. For the Spring of twenty twenty-three, if the net effect of student transfers was not taken into account, the student transfers would have had an impact on whether a district would be open or closed. Mount Harmony Elementary would be under capacity at eighty-six percent instead of overcapacity, and Beach Elementary would be over capacity at one hundred and two point four percent instead of undercapacity currently at ninety-four point one.
Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
You don't need anything from us, right?
This is for information. No, we do not need anything from you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item eleven, Items of Interest, and this is for informational purposes only. The Site Plan and Subdivision Application List, if you have any questions or discussion. None. We'll move on to item twelve, which is Public Comment. At this time, I don't think we have anyone on the line other than staff.
Anyone signed up? No.
No.
Everybody went home, weren't they?
No one for public comment. And that takes us to item thirteen, which is Adjournment.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Be a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, aye? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too, Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.